Good evening. Today is June 18th, 2025. I am going to call the meeting to order at 6:34. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Three, the approval of the meeting agenda. First, Mary. Second, Miranda. On favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None. Motion carried. For the approval of the minutes, 4.1, the regular meeting on June 4th, 2025. First, Russ. Then, Miranda. On favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None. Motion carried. Five, presentations and awards and acknowledgements and correspondence. 5.1, board member service recognition. I guess I'll go up. I don't know. I'll do it right here. Okay, I've got speech, Mary. Good evening, everyone. I hope I don't cry. Oh, my gosh. Tonight, I have the privilege and the very bittersweet task of recognizing someone who has been an incredible part of our school board family. Mary, your time on this board has been marked by passion, energy, and an unwavering dedication to our students and our community. From the very beginning, you didn't just take on the role of board member. You embraced it fully. Whether it was cheering in the bleachers at lacrosse games, clapping from the audience at our student musicals and plays, or just being present for so many school events. Your love for this district and especially for its kids has always shown through. But you don't stop there. You dove deep into understanding the ever-changing landscape of education policy. Policy, policy, policy. You eagerly learned the roles and responsibilities of a board member and always kept your eye on the big picture while never losing sight of the small moments that matter. When new laws came down from the state, you were often the first to ask the right questions and to think critically about how we could lead effectively through this change. And then, there were the conferences, the long drives in the early mornings, the stacks of notes, and of course, the laughter. So many laughs. Those trips weren't just professional development. They became shared memories that I know will carry with us for a long, long time. You set the bar with you, or you set the bar with you thoughtfulless... Wait. Thoughtful with your enthusiasm and your heart. On behalf of the entire board and truly from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you for showing up, for speaking up, and for lifting up everyone around you. We're going to miss you on this board and be... But you know, this isn't goodbye. It's just the next chapter. And we can't wait to see where your dedication and spirit take you next. Thank you, Mary. You made a difference. You're very welcome. So, we have this wonderful plaque that recognizes your service from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th. You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Make sure you get the shirt.
Yeah.
Because it's important.
That is.
You can, if you would like.
We allotted.
Yes.
Might it be quick?
Okay, I just want to say thank you. I've learned a lot, and it's definitely true. Newark has my heart and my passion. I really hope that we continue to focus on what's important. Is that everyone is welcome, as my shirt says, and that we are a public school and we work for everyone. And that is super, super important. Separation of church and state in the public, in the Constitution. Let's keep going for it. I love this district, and it's great to see things that are changing and things that are improving constantly. And we need to bring back or continue to focus on people who want to be here and who want to stay here. And I really do love it. I'm gonna miss it, but I need a break.
We'll see you. We'll see you around, I'm sure.
Yes, I will be.
Okay. 5.2, Drama Club Overnight Field Trip Proposal. Emily, come on up. Oh, yeah.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Emily Howard, and I am the Drama Club Advisor at the high school and the middle school. I do the musical there, too. So I'm here tonight in advance of next year. Thank you for that opportunity to do this in advance. But I'm here to ask for approval for a Drama Club field trip that we go on in January. I think this will be the seventh year. I was thinking as I was walking over. COVID kind of shook us a little bit there. But we take students to this New York State Theater Education Association Student Conference. It's three days and two nights at the Villa Roma Resort in Calicoon, New York. They, it's... What it is is 800 theater students from around New York State and their teachers participating in a variety of workshops. These workshops include anything from stage makeup to dance classes, audition techniques, Shakespeare, truly anything you can think of under the sun. The kids have an opportunity to participate in five workshops that they select in advance. There's a college fair that's specifically geared to students who want to continue in the performing arts or find a way to keep the arts in their life in their college setting. And then there's a showcase performance. Here's a picture of us attending from last year. There's a theme every year, so this year was, it was a, you know, wicked kind of theme. So that's why they're in pink and green. The conference, oops, I clicked something weird, Kyle. Sorry. I clicked an arrow, and now I don't want to click anything again. Okay, thank you. Which one?
The right one. The right arrow.
Perfect. Okay, it is January 9th, 10th, and 11th. Again, it's in Calicoon, New York. It's, the way I describe it to the students is it's sort of like the Dirty Dancing Resort where everything's included all in one place. So the students never leave that location, and it is extremely well chaperoned. I'll talk about that on the next slide. And they do miss school on Friday of that week. So the conference fee, this is last year's cost, but I expect it to be similar to this. It was 295 per student. It covers their hotel, all their meals, all their workshops. It's everything they need for the weekend. Bus transportation, in the past, we've shared a charter bus with Union Springs and Minders and sometimes Marcus Whitman. It ends up being about 80 to 100 a student. And then I pay for mine out of pocket to keep the price low for the kids. And then, if we need to bring an additional chaperone, the Drama Club has voted to cover that cost. How the kids pay for this is through individual fundraising. So Music Boosters officially brought drama under their umbrella this year in their booster meeting so that any student who's a drama student can participate in any of the music fundraisers throughout the year. And kids have been saving money, knowing this is potentially coming down the pipeline. These, also, I will say, the bus transportation Drama Club voted to subsidize that in the past, which has helped make this accessible for kids to attend. And the rules. So they, I can only bring 15 students because that's based on our school population size. Students have to be in grades 10, 11, and 12. I think, I said it's a highly organized and very secure conference. It truly is. We have, throughout the weekend, it's a working weekend for all the chaperones and teachers there because we are stationed at various places and throughout all the free time, et cetera. How we, I select the students. I create an application process in case we have more than 15. We haven't yet, but as we continue to go every year, I can see that happening. So we'd probably go based on seniority and kids who have attended in the past. Usually, if the dates align, students who have attended want to attend the next year, too, because it's such an amazing experience for them. So when we have 10 students, I can be the one chaperone. As soon as we have 11, we have an additional chaperone that we have to provide based on the conference rules. I always think it's important to include what the students say. So on our bus ride home, I always send out a survey. Here are some quotes that I got from our kids. This year, here's another picture of us. This year, one of our students in the middle, Cheyenne, worked on the crew for the student showcase. So that was kind of a cool part of the weekend. They, the students, time and time again, talk about the opportunity to explore subjects that they don't normally get to explore during their school day here at Newark, which is really important because they're, these students are really passionate about the performing arts and finding ways to keep that alive in their life beyond high school. And then they also really talk about the opportunity to meet students who are like them from other school districts. I can't tell you the impact that it's had for students practicing communication skills, meeting new friends, sitting next to someone in a workshop that they've never met before. I think it's really valuable for our students, and that's what they say time and again. I had a board member ask last year about students who have gone in the past, and I counted, and I kept a spreadsheet because that's what I like to do. So I've had 34 students that have graduated. I have students that are still in high school. So I think this is pretty neat, that 17 of them did major in something in college. 15 of them are currently majoring in that. And then I have working professionals now. I don't know if you've ever seen Ryan Hermanette on the news, but he is one of our students and attended this conference. We've got Justin Brooks, who's now a working actor, right? Signed that contract. I'm working with an agent. I have Isabella Bailey is a working technician in lighting design field in New York City. I have two students, I was just sharing. Two students are working at the Rev this summer, one in costume and one in set design. So it's really, really cool to see this happen. And this quote was from a student this past year, too. No matter how scared you are, just go for it. I met this one person by just going for it, talking to them, and it was awesome. Our students are still developing those skills of talking to one another, and I can't emphasize enough that this provides an opportunity for our students to do that. So those are, that's my presentation, and I'm coming to you to ask, to seek your approval to have students attend this in January of next year. Do you have any questions?
I vote yes.
I'm looking at a board that has had students attend, so that's always a, you're a good audience for that. But what can I answer for you?
I was just wondering, when is NICEADA going to expand to have another workshop? Are they only ever in January? Or are they looking that if they're growing, they need to have more opportunities for this kind of thing to happen again?
They have professional development throughout the year that I haven't been a part of yet, but I always look to see if the dates align with something that I could potentially do. So that's what they do, providing those professional development opportunities for educators. The student conference is a once-a-year event that they, that they handle with the kids, but it's, it's, yeah. Kids find it very beneficial, and they love it. And also, the reason I'm coming too early is because I have to start registration by October. October 15th is when we have to send in the start. So my hope was that I could tell families that this is potentially happening this year, so they could start looking at saving.
Yep. So motion is... Okay, there we go. On favor? It's Miranda and Matt, all in favor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. The kids will be excited.
Yes. Yes. I always love seeing the highlights as they're there on Facebook. It's really, it looks like, it's really fun. Yes, yes. You're welcome. Yes, it's always fun. I think I saw them sledding down a hill, I think it was. It was nice that we had snow for them to do that, too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, public comment. At this time, public comments are invited from individuals who have signed up with Stacy Warren, District Clerk. Her information is stacy.warn@newarkcst.org or 332-3217 by noon on the day of the board meeting and are speaking on a topic that pertains to an agenda item. Speakers must be a district resident, property owner, employee, and/or a parent of a current student. Wait to be called by the board president and approach the podium to speak using the microphone. Identify yourself. Limit remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if a concern is a group concern. And supplement verbal presentation with written reports if necessary or desired. Conduct themselves in a respectful or civil manner in accordance with the district code of conduct and all applicable laws, regulations, and policies. Personal, personal comments toward a member of the community, staff, student, or board of education member will not be considered appropriate. A representative will respond to each individual within five business days. Please note, the board has the right to determine whether particular subjects are inappropriate for public comments. We have no one signed up for public comments. Seven, old business, new business, issues of public interest. 7.1, respond acknowledgement of previous public comments. We have none. 7.2, I need a motion to approve the contract with the Newark Teachers Association for the period July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Okay, Mary, then Miranda. On favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None. Motion carried. 7.3, motion to approve the contract with the Newark Administrators Association for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. First, Russ. Second, Miranda. On favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None. Motion carried. 7.4, motion to approve the employment agreement with the district office confidential clerical staff for the period July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. First, Mary. Second, Russ. On favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None. Motion carried. 7.5, motion to approve the following resolution regarding reserve funds. Whereas the district, in accordance with the state education department and generally accepted accounting principles, GAAP, is required to estimate the potential amount of its assigned fund balance reserve accounts prior to the end of the fiscal year. As reflected in the fund balance projections, the reserves are recommended to be replenished per the chart below. The fund balance represents our best projections as of June 30th, 2025. It is understood that the final determination of the reserves will be determined by the Board of Education upon the completion of the June 30th, 2025 audit financial statements. Resolved that the Board of Education estimate that the assigned fund balance reserves at June 30th, 2025 will replenish funded as follows. Assigned fund balance estimated replenishment of assigned fund balances at June 30th, 2025 not to exceed... Reserved for the employee benefit cured liability per general municipal law section 6P, $150,000. Reserved for capital expenditures 2024 per education law section 36511, $750,000. Reserved for the bus purchase 2024 per educational law section 36511, $750,000. Reserved for insurance per general municipal law section 6-R, $250,000. And reserved for the liability per general municipal law section 6-R, $200,000. Anybody have any questions? First, Russ. Second, Matt. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Abstain? None. Okay. It's time for somebody else to talk. Eight verbal reports. 8.1 instructional, Krista. Or who, who, or Donna? This is all Donna.
No, last one.
You've got them.
All right. So as you know, the end of the school year in a district is very busy. Lots of events happening. I have seen, gone to and during the day or at night, awards assemblies. We have art shows going on. I think there was a baseball game that is getting rescheduled. I think it's next week. I'm excited about that. I saw a math carnival at Perkins. They transformed a classroom into a very engaging math, like it was a wonderland. It was awesome. The kids were so engaged. I loved it. We're reviewing a lot of end-of-year data, you know, thinking about where we're going next with the academics and social emotional. So I know staff is, the principals are working with their staff. Krista and I have been looking at a lot of end-of-year data. Many people working hard in their respective areas, thinking about planning for summer programs. So Reds Academy, I've worked with the amazing Will Bean, coordinating some of what we're going to be doing at New Teacher, just what next year is going to look like, looking at our systems and our processes for staff. So a lot of good things happening. Planning for summer school, planning for the next school year. I know we have graduation on Friday, my first graduation at Newark. I'm super excited about that. So it's been, it's been awesome. It's a busy time of year, but I'm very fortunate to have Krista. I will miss her. She's amazing. So, thank you.
8.2, Finance. Greg?
Good evening. We had our preliminary audit this week, Monday, Tuesday. We're in the final thresholds of transition from, from Greg to Paul. So we're getting things done here. There's four days left, but who's counting? But the rest of my time I yield to Donna because I think she still has a lot more to say.
8.3, Human Resources. Christine?
I just said to Greg, who can I stop by and have a sarcastic joke to that'll laugh when he's gone? So we've appreciated his sense of humor, for sure. Just a congratulations to John Mastin, to Carrie Hamelink, to Pete Zirkus, who are here this evening, who have been awarded tenure. We truly appreciate their service.
8.4, Superintendent Susan?
I mean, they haven't been awarded it yet. Congratulations, Carrie, Pete, and John. Very well deserved. So I'm going to begin with Mary. So Julie gave you the big speech. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you for your service on the board. You have pushed me to be a better superintendent. You've asked hard questions. Simultaneously, you've been very supportive. You are a proponent for the sports, the students, the sense of belonging that you foster for everyone. Academic achievement. When I think about Newark pride and community, it's like your face that should be right in the dictionary. You are involved with everything, from the community center to the chamber, to our school district. You've been a teacher, so you have that lens. You have been a board member, so you have that lens. You've had boots on the ground as a proctor. You've done it all. So your contribution to the board has been immense with the wealth of knowledge that you've brought and again, the support that you've given, not only to me, to our team, and most importantly, to our staff and children. So thank you for your service. We were very grateful to have you for those three years. Greg, this is your last board meeting here with us. Greg came in last summer. You've done a wonderful job keeping us fiscally sound, working with all of the staff and your team, and we couldn't have done this year without you and your help and support. So thank you for everything, and I believe you've left it in a very nice place for Paul to take over. Thanks for keeping it together for us this year. And Krista. This is your last board meeting. How do you feel about that?
So Krista has over 30 years in education and many, many, many years here with us. I would say that Krista has been the leading force in instruction and pedagogical practice here. She looks at that strategic plan, and she has set that foundation and has been that person to ensure, along with our teachers and our instructional coach and all of our staff, to actually implement that and bring things to fruition for us. I think we've said it before, but I'm going to say it again. We've gone from 19 indicators down to seven as far as accountability in the last three years, and that has to do with your instructional leadership. You are always the ultimate professional, positive, direct, kind, compassionate, and approachable. And I just want to thank you for being part of the Newark team and part of my team, and I couldn't have done my superintendency without you thus far, so thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't also say thank you to Sue, to our cabinet, our administrative team, all of our associations. This has truly been a privilege for me. It's hard for me to say goodbye. Newark has a special place in my heart, too. It really is a wonderful place with a wonderful team of people, and it's been such a ride. And the quote that Emily posted earlier about, you know, kind of just embracing that change and jumping in, that's kind of how I feel. As scared as you are, you just have to go with it. And I wish Newark only the best, so thank you.
So I also think this is a celebration because on July 1st, there's a new law that goes into effect and that indicates that we have to have students on our Board of Education. We have gone through an interview process, and we have chosen three wonderful students to represent the board. We have 10th grader Kehlani Alamo Ubiles. We have two 11th graders, Ethan Clock and Braden Sherman. So they will be joining us, and we couldn't be happier. Their interviews were absolutely amazing, some of their life goals, what they want to represent on the board, and their voice will be very instrumental in moving and elevating student voice and change in our district. So we're excited for them to join us, and they will come onboard during our reorg meeting in July. Also, in just a few minutes, we will be looking at the consent agenda, and I would like to congratulate John Ginter for being the new director of MTSS. We're very excited to have you onboard and continue your service, but in a different role. And we will also be appointing Mel Myers to become the principal of the middle school. Very well deserved, and we're looking forward to her leadership in that new role for her. And then some of the things that we've been talking about. It's been extremely busy this past few weeks, but we had graduation rehearsal today outside. Fingers crossed that Friday, the weather will uphold, and it won't be today's weather. Not, not tonight. But graduation will be 7 o'clock on Friday, and we are looking forward to welcoming our 2025 graduates and celebrating with them. So that's something to look forward to. This week, Paul is here. This week, Paul is here. Paul, he's our new business official, and yesterday, he got acclimated. We took a tour. We went to all five buildings. We met every principal. We met buildings and grounds, cafeteria staff, and so he was very busy. We missed Mike Miller, but we were there, Mike. And so, just one more person to meet. So Paul starts his official time with us on Monday, so we're looking forward to having you. And then lastly, last Thursday, we had our advisory meeting regarding the cell phone bell-to-bell band, and we had representation there from all stakeholders. If you have any feedback, there is a really nice article that Brenda Pittman wrote, where you can provide any feedback in the next week. I think it's like the last week in June is the cutoff, by sending an email to Stacy Warren if you were not able to share feedback on that bell-to-bell band.
I think I got everything. If I forgot something, just let me know.
It's a busy, busy week.
Well, without further ado, nine, review and approval of the consent agenda and the addendum. First, Russ. Second, Miranda, on favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None. Motion carried. Congratulations, everybody that's in the room. 10, board development committee reports, monitoring of the board. 10.1, board committee meetings and related updates. Russ, how did legislative meeting go on Saturday?
It, it went very well. It, we, we talked about, you know, the, creating the, the state paper and surveys and stuff to get that up and running. We talked about resolutions for NISBA, and I got a couple ideas and did some work, and I have a draft for a resolution that we can submit, submit to NISBA, which I will pass out. And basically, it says, "We resolve that the New York State School Boards Association support the development and implementation of financial aid that provides supplement state funding to rural school districts for the purpose of equalizing teacher salaries and improving recruitment and retention." And that, that, I submitted it as a draft to NISBA, and they gave me back, feedback, which got me to that point. And then there's a rationale in the, that you can read, that talks about the staffing shortages and...
I'll let everybody have the time to read it.
If the board, board approves, we will submit it.
Yep, because we got it July 18th.
July 18th.
Yep. Did they?
They said, they, well, they'd never tell you anything. They, they, I had a different ration, or different resolution, and they gave me wording that they thought was better.
Okay.
So that's the wording that I put.
Okay.
So, yeah, they...
Same idea.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. Definitely the same idea. I went more into a study that needed to be done, and they said, no, 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 don't worry about that. Just ask for that, and then we, we'll figure that part out.
Yeah. Little bites. I like it.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any other comments?
Do we have to...
We do have to make a motion to do. First, Mary. Second, Miranda, on favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carried. When is this survey going to go out? Are they going to send that out for a state position over August, September?
I think, I think they're going to put it out in August.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
I remember.
Generally when we do it. So we'll have that to our board agenda when that comes. NISBA, there's the Leaders in Education event, that is August 1st and 2nd. If you want to attend that, please let Stacy know. The Rural Schools Association also has one. Susan put it in the weekend letter. It's July 13th. It's like the middle of July. So make sure if you want to attend any of those, let Stacy know.
It's a real good one. I've been there before.
And then earlier, well, earlier this afternoon, I got an email from Sue from 4 County. They are going to do a student board training for both students and board members together, it sounds like. So the first meeting will be held on August 11th at the Conference Center from 4 to 6. So if anybody's interested in doing that, please also let Stacy know. There's, August 11th.
August 11th.
Yep, yep. We'll send out all the information so that you can apply with the appropriate information that you need to. So I'm looking forward to that. I think that will be a lot of fun with our new student ex-officio, however you say it, members, so. I think that's it for 4 County, besides the June 28th and the other one in July for the mandatory meetings, or mandatory classes for our new board member. Steve's not here to, but I don't think they have met. They met, and he already reported for Wayne Fingerlake's policies. Board of Education Subcommittee Reports, how did Policy Committee go today? Here, Russ?
We, we got through a couple of policies that you'll see next meeting.
At the New York?
At the New York. And mostly the, the cell phone policy that, and we kicked a bunch back to, you know, get more information on. But we're starting, we're working our way through the book, through the ones that are from 2017, and bringing them up to date.
Is that, is that the latest we have?
That's the oldest.
Oldest? I mean, the oldest? The latest oldest? Okay. Sounds awesome. Any audits? Instructional, nope. Co-curricular, nope. Okay. 10.3, the second reading and adoption of the following policies. 1210, board members nomination and election, that was revised. 3120, school district standards and guidelines for webpage publishing, that was revised. 3311, notification of disclosure of employee disciplinary records, that's new. 5685, maximum temperature of school buildings and indoor facilities, that's also new. And 6110, code of ethics for board members and all district personnel. I need a motion. First, Miranda. Second, by Matt. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None. Motion carried. 11, proposed future agenda items, ongoing discussions. 11.1, the reorg meeting is going to be July 9th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the High School LGI. And then we also have our graduation again this Friday for our students. So, I need a motion for adjournment. First, Mary. Second, Matt. On favor? Aye. None opposed and none abstain. Motion carried. I think we have a student? Do we have a student?
Yeah.
Come on up. You can get signed. Congra...